First, before we get going. Just the word set. And you can see we have a special meeting and then we go right to work sessions. So I want to read the notice first. Notice the whole teleconference meeting is pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D David 2021. Due to the current federal state emergency declaration and guidance about limiting persons first in contact with COVID-19. Pandemic by action of the school board of the Falcon Rapids School District, all future meetings of the Falcon Rapids School Board will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D David 2021. Meetings by telephone and other electronic means until further notice. One or more board members may participate by telephone or other electronic means. In accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D David 2021, members of the public are not permitted to attend this meeting due to the current pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location via Zoom. The link to this meeting will be posted on our district website. Public comment for school board meetings during an opportunity to visitors to speak may be submitted as follows. To B R I P L E Y. At Falcon Rapids dot A 12 dot M N dot U. And we'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic of the world, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the word "E" just as well. Welcome, everybody. Everybody in attendance here. First item up is going to be approve the meeting agenda. This is the one we cannot motion. Matters change anything, so. Motion by Greg. Motion by Greg. We have a second. Second by Brittany. Any discussion on the meeting agenda? There are no discussion, although in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those both same. Motion carried. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Have any bar. Okay, we will move on. Next item up will be business items. And it may approve Mr. Brian Corf as interim superintendent for the 2020, 2020 school year. Replacing Mr. Jerry Ness. Oh. Motion by Greg. Second. Second by Brenda. And this is to give the interim title to Brian. Now that he's completed his licensure and paperwork, so congratulations. Thank you, welcome aboard. I also want to thank Mr. Ness for stepping up and operating to help us out. I think all of us here are very appreciative of that. Hopefully you can hear us.
Yep, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. But you've been impressed with everything that's happened this summer.
From the board's perspective, it's been a pretty good transition. Hopefully.
Any additional discussion? There are no discussion, although in favor of the pro leading Mr. Brian Corf as interim superintendent first. You bet.
So. Mr. Corf, I know. And so. Um. I always find fun with dates. And. Um. One of those friends is Connie. And. On page seventeen Thursday, I mean, we kind of every day we send it. So, oh, she was seeing me on the phone. On page seventeen Thursday, when I was walking out of the drugstore, I saw him. Right out of the air, I tipped him through the physical clothes. And I knew that that was her thing I said to you. Over the day of doctors, which has been professional, but you know. Um. All of our teachers were long there, they always be cool. Yeah. They walked down the one, and I told everybody, let's go through them after page twelve. And there was a whole lot of people in the area. And when I walked back, there was a great Chinese man sitting like that on the table. So I knew that that needed to be explained. That we knew Ed was with us that day. So we knew that Ed was with us that day. And so I did save it. Which I believe is kind of the reason that the elementary school. And I saved it. And so I wanted to give it to you. Um. Which you knew what, and you already have that script out already. Great and awesome.
Oh my. No worries. Any other discussion? Okay, there are no further discussion, although in favor of the motion, which is by saying aye. Aye. Don't pause. Motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Corf. Thank you. Next item up, special. Excuse me, schedule a special meeting in November, approve the sale of bonds. Possible date of Wednesday, November eighteen, 2020, maybe. Really quick explain.
Yeah, absolutely, so we were approached by Dick, who are coming to advise her that right now the market is very favorable to refinance bonds. If you jump on the opportunity, we're going to be refinancing two of our bonds. One from two thousand and twelve that comes with facility maintenance. And then the second one, which is the biggest bond that we have from two thousand and fourteen, which is our building construction bond. Between the two bonds over ten years, we're going to save our tax basis for a million dollars. This is a great opportunity to give that to our community. And. And that's what that even for. If we sell, eventually we'll get the formal resolution, which is provided to you guys. And I know that we're doing everything this way possible for taxes.
So we probably want to assess if that date works. Will that work for the, do the financial advisors need to be present when we do that?
Yeah, so it has to be after the closing of the market. Or anything after five P M. will work. Once the market flows, maybe you'll see the sell. So as long as it's after five P M., we should be okay. And if you decide on another day, please let me know, so I can work with the officials, let them know. The financial advisors will most likely do, and we kind of give you guys an update of what the rest. So if the route is like and how the market flows and. And improve the sell offer.
Anything works for me. For everybody. Review one on six o'clock. Are you in time? Yeah. Okay. We'll make a motion that we schedule a special meeting in November eighteenth at six P M. To approve the sale of bond. Also. Motion in a second. I'd like. Any discussion on the date? There are no discussion, although in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those are both same. Motion carries. Hey, upcoming meetings, a regular meeting October nineteenth this month at six P M. And I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Greg. Second. Second by Ann. Any discussion on journey? In favor of journey, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those both same. We're adjourned, we'll move on to the work session. Oh, first item up will be review COVID plans and county case numbers. Hey, well, Mr. Simmons puts up our. Form that we're using here. And I guess a little bit. I guess this, you know, behalf of the admin team, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Martinez and the staff, I want to thank Mr. Ness. For being a great leader, stepping in. That morning, Dr. Richardson passed away. Great mentor. Learned a lot from you. We appreciate all your time, your efforts, hard work. And we are very happy that you are close by, Mr. Nelson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Definitely still committed to helping you guys be successful in any way you can, so just let me know.
Okay, just kind of reviewing here, recapping a little bit of COVID plan, just still done just a little bit here. Kind of looking at our numbers here that we look at with the fourteen day case break. Ranges, you know, if they say zero to ten, in person, or if they're all students, and the twenty. Or tens less than twenties, elementary in person, middle, high schools, hybrid, which currently are in. Twenty to less than thirty. Thousand cases in the county, both hybrid. And thirty to less than fifties, elementary, hybrid, middle, high school, distance. Then fifty or more. Would be both distant, so. Go down to number two, Mr. Simmons. Our Chelton County case numbers, you can kind of see where we've been here the last few weeks. Late July, early August, we were at, we were on six, close to seven. Late August, we started getting to, you know, we were twelve, that was twelve, and went back to nine. In this past week, last week, the county number was fourteen point four eight. It's trending up right now, and what they're saying here this week, this Thursday, when the number comes out, we will be close to twenty. So that's where we're at. I have not heard from after that where it's heading, so. If you get to twenty, go back up, you know, what they're saying is both hybrid, however, that's one indicator. So you remember indicators are where our county number is, where our community number is. Positive cases in our community, and then positive cases in our school, elementary. So the three things to, to look at when we're determining our learning model. Number three, Mr. Simmons. Other factors, we can go. Now, we talked about the factors, learning miles, the Chelton County, clearly, and then in this goal. Number three, the three teams working together, just reminded that we're working with Public Health. And then we're working with the Lakes Country Regional Team and helping us guide us. So we met this past Monday with Public Health, and they're kind of giving us the information of where that trend is going. Current learning model, we talked about that, elementary, we're in person. Right now, full-time distance learners, there's ninety students, or full-time distance learners in the elementary building. And then there's forty-six full-time distance learners at the high school.
Those numbers seem consistent since the first week.
Our number of distance has gone down, we've had more from that. The in-person. We haven't had, we can go the other way. Starting in person, we go to do. Since school started.
Nice, we've had a few changes. Busing, just a busing concern that's come out with our, in our meetings and COVID meetings. And that busing, the busing concern is when kids are in a bus over thirty minutes. It could be before school, after school, going to school, going home. Or it can be on a trip or activities. So that is a concern right now. When a bus is going over thirty minutes.
This is more statewide.
Yep. Yep. So we are looking at that, I don't know if Mr. Nelson wants to, anything with activities, with busing or whatever. We're going to take you to about, you want to take to our two buses while we're doing that. Busing.
Yeah, so we have put a map to twenty-six on a bus, anything over that, we've taken two buses. Like, that's actually, there's been a void bus, and a yellow bus. Football. Voice doctor team is using two buses, football. So volleyball, football, starting up here, we'll have two buses to the street. Seeing that they go through, so. Working with the bus company to keep those numbers where they feel safe.
So our open team meets every Thursday, we meet at one o'clock, we discuss whether, what's going on in your buildings? What can we change, what can we improve? What can we add? Right now, what our COVID team is saying is that we should continue with our current learning model that we're in right now. Keep the COVID plan, the protocols that we have in place, it's the masks, it's where we have kids in the classrooms, things like that. Push out on social media was a big thing in our last meeting, is, is we're seeing our members go up in the county and your community, and how do we communicate? With our members or community to help us out here? And by social distancing, we're in large groups. And what we're saying, kind of, we're quoting teams, and that nineteen to thirty, April. Are trying to communicate a message, to encourage them to. Avoid the large gatherings, things like that, so. Right now, what we have, we only have staff and students in the building, both buildings at this time. So we don't have any community activities going on. There's volleyball, it won't be anybody other than the players and coaches and such, people are part of the unit inside the building. So. Kind of our plan that we have going on right now. Right now, our team, COVID team, don't think that we better change anything. I think our thermal cameras are doing well, we're looking at, we have a large camera here that is up in the ceiling. And that's working really well, we're looking to put one more in each building to replace the ones that we have. These are a little bit more effective than the ones that we have that are legal and what that, what that the screen. Plus, it's a little bit quicker, because kids are lining up. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Martinez, anything to add from our COVID team?
Not a moment. So, only three, we just sent our runners on Friday with what group, every kid would be in, in case we have to go to hybrid. We wanted to get that out there, so, but the number is going higher. So parents have some kind of plan if we have to go to that. Um, private model, so. Hopefully, we don't have to, but we want to give parents the heads up. So we gave them a calendar, obviously, for the end of the year. So. Trying to be, put as much information out there as we can, and there's.
I guess when you're looking at learning models, what they're recommending is look at the trend. You know, the trend's still going up for a couple of weeks, and then look at changing model. But if it's just a one-time high and then it goes back down, they're not recommending. Really, so we're looking at changing models. If it's a slight increase or down, you're saying make sure it's going for about two or three weeks before you look at changing the model. Now, different factors could affect that change with the model. You know, for, for example, if you have a bunch of cases, then working with our regional team and Public Health is probably your direct match. Right now, I think overall, we've been very good with our positive cases that we have. With the tracing in that. Been good so far, from March to September. I think our next goal will be to. We probably. Overall, students, both buildings, been very good. Cooperation has been great. Our students and staffs have been great. Any questions, concerns, thoughts? Recommendations? Pretty impressive, it's a smart design. Valley major, you know, another factor that we need to look at. What we're doing is working well enough, we're comfortable enough to deal with that. If we do have any exposure or something, we're quite small and all figured out. Even if our number is a little higher. I think we're doing a nice job. Just what I've been hearing. Brechmidt. The Lakes Country praised our staff and students, we needed a lot to do to their health and safety. Parent teacher conferences are coming up, that's a big thing. Right now, we're looking at both buildings having more virtual. Getting a communication out there with the parents. And information to, to virtually, via email, by phone, at the high school, or by Zoom, what we're looking at. And elementary, Mr. Nelson. And the parent meeting, we're calling. We'll work our, you know, give enough time for parents to know what's going on. A couple weeks before. It's not ideal, but it's what's best, to save. Seventy degrees, and you have something outside. Parent teacher conference in the high school, November, right, December? Maybe. Anything else COVID related? Okay, for the week, I think Mr. Ness is going to talk about what we can flexible, your point.
Yes, I've had a few phone calls with Cindy Jackson from M D E. And we've been searching information, we, last, I believe it was April, or excuse me, December. We received from Minnesota Department of Education, an extension to the flexible year plan. And, and that was for the twenty twenty-one school year. So recently, I called her, it's, you know, just explaining, you know, with COVID going on, transition to new leadership and different things. We would like to see if we could extend for another year as well. Finally, a letter came today that was, was sent out. It didn't get to me as interim superintendent until today, it was sent out in August. And we do have an extension for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, so that's, that's good news. But they're not saying that we have to do it immediately in October. But the board does have to act on that, so depending on, are you looking at? Deciding now whether you want to go to a five-day or four-day, or I guess. My recommendation is, would be to wait a year, there's so much going on right now, and your admin team is. All consumed by COVID. And we just don't know what's going to be happening yet. I, I guess I would take advantage of the extension. And then really plan out a, a good thorough discussion, some focus groups with community. And I'll just kind of stop there and. Listen to questions. I'm really having a hard time hearing, sorry.
All right, I think it was, I think it was brought up last time, but I think we were going to be asking you to do a side-by-side analysis. And I know you were a little consumed, so is that something you're still working on?
Yep, it's definitely something that I'll dive into and get more, more concrete numbers from you guys. Year over year, it's most of the half, I think, that I say the school is just taking about a hundred thousand dollars. But I'll get okay concrete numbers and get that broad. During that. Over the last three, four years. What, Jerry, Greg Larson here, what's the, these recommendations? With regard to four-day versus five-day school week?
You know, I don't think they have a recommendation, but I, I don't think it's a secret that they certainly favor five days. They're allowing the flexible year plan to continue, I believe there's eight schools, and I believe all eight received extensions. And, but I don't think, to put it bluntly, they're big fans. But if you can prove that you're meeting your world's best workforce goals and you're making progress. I don't think they're going to stand in the way of, of, of the, of a district wanting to be using a four-day week.
My, my opinion is. I get the cost statement, you can measure that easily. And I suppose you can measure. Achievement, but we don't have anything to compare that achievement. And that's been my concern for a long time. Students may be meeting their goals under the four-day school week. Maybe exceeding their goals under a four-day school week. But we don't know whether or not they would be exceeding them more. With a five-day school week, maybe they will, I don't know. But I'd like to focus. Especially if the numbers indicate from Mr. Martinez that from a budget perspective. It's not going to materially affect what our district can provide. I'd really like to have a work session specifically. Focused on. The board members, the perspectives, and their different opinions as it relates to the four-day school week. What is the, Mr. Ness? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I am hearing you.
What is the timeframe for which? The school district has to exercise its, the school board has to exercise its decision on the. The four-week flex plan.
I will have to read that letter again, that I sent it out to all the board, but I don't believe that there is a, a specific deadline. Certainly, you wouldn't want to wait too, too long, but I would just say reasonable time. So I, I will find that letter and, and read that, but I don't think there's a timeline.
It's based on preparation for the staff, just with the working of four days, and the planning of the remaining days. Kind of what is possible in time. As much notice as possible.
Usually in both March or April, approve the plan.
Yeah, it just says that the school board has to approve. The, the plan to continue, or the extension, it does not give an exact date.
If we, if we approve an extension, we go through the work session process, and decide if I do. What we want to do, if we can revert back, that's not an issue with it. To five days.
I, I think the way this would work, if you did not approve the extension, you would then by default go to a five-day week.
Yep. What sort of things? From a planning perspective, because I don't know. Just real generally speaking, what sort of things does administration and staff have to? Analyze and review? In order to? Make that transition, and if that transition takes place. Is there? You know, two or three real big picture items in terms of? What would be the topics of discussion in the event the board? Did not exercise its authority to sign anything, and then by default, it goes back to five days, or let's say. The board after discussion. And hopefully further analysis with other, with input from the staff, of course, and administration, and, and all members of the, the school district. If the school board decided to. To just expressly exercise. Just by action that. The district no longer will. Proceed with the four-day school week. Mr. Corf or Mr. Nelson, can you kind of give me an idea? Or Mr. Martinez? Just real generally, I don't need to get into the details, but, I mean, I'm a serious curriculum. And scheduling and things like that, but of all the big things, just, just so I have an understanding, I mean, I, there's, because I, I don't want to. I don't want to indicate that I think it's absolutely necessary without having a better idea as to. The logistics behind it. And the logic behind it in terms of. How much time would be required by administration and staff to formulate a plan that makes sense for a private school? I mean, it could be a lot of others than meals to be.
I think the, the curriculum, scheduling. I think the thing is curriculum, scheduling, and scheduling covers a lot of areas, it's activities, it's the daily schedule. The other thing too is budget. You know, we're working on the budget, we're setting up a budget, we're making sure that, you know, you can open that budget. You know, we're building the reserves right now, we're going to pay that 10% of 42% of the reserves. So that's something we'd have to look at too. That'd be part of that, Mr. Martinez, we might want to share a little bit more, but that's something that we're going to want to consider too. We have to look at a clear operation, one day one day, one year, I think, a little cooperation, we have to look in terms of transportation that, that's just the utilities, energy, heat. The amount of support that we need, that volume, garbage, water, we really have to look at higher level operations.
But there's, we have some basis for which to make an educated guess that the difference is about a hundred thousand dollars per year, sometimes maybe a bit higher, sometimes lower.
I think knowing that MDE is allowing the flexible year plan, and again, if we're reading the goals, I think you would really have to be doing some community work on why you would switch. Because from my understanding, the surveys are the community staff are very much in favor of of the four day week. So I think you'd have some work. That that would probably take a lot of time, community time and meeting to to make sure that there's buy in to go to a five day week, go back to a five day week. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't believe you can go to a five day and compare it to the four day for a few years and then go back. I think once you go to a five day week, there's there's no turning back is the way I read this. Cindy Jackson has said they've not approved any new four day week schools for years. And they don't plan on doing that was was, I believe her inferring is that it it wouldn't be able to go back. So once you go to five day, you're you're there unless, well, who knows? Who knows down the road, if four day might be the best thing again, I I don't know. So I think there's a lot of community work. And I agree, the budget is a big one, food service, I think your contracts with your unions are going to be an issue as far as making sure duty days and all of that gets changed over. So there's a, there's a fair amount of work that goes with the transition.
I would say if possible, for staff members, if one of my children struggled with moving here in childcare on Monday, I personally have never had it. Now that my kids are older, it doesn't matter as much to me, but our staff members may not have childcare for Monday, but they now have to come to work versus they're being home on Monday. So I think even if that would work for staff as well. I personally, like I said, now that my kids are older, it doesn't affect me nearly as much. I know I have been told by staff members that, and I would like to see this, because I know it doesn't make sense in my eyes because I'm not a teacher, but I was told that with the four day week, the kids are getting longer time in certain areas versus five day week. And I guess for me personally, I'm a middle, so I'd like to see how that works. To a point, it doesn't make sense to me. That's just something I've been told by a teacher that that's why the four day week is better than five. I don't know. And I think that's kind of how it was explained to me. But I, like I said, I would like to see from a staff member who was here during five day and during four day, how that kind of balance would be worked out as possible.
And I add on to what I previously said. To kind of dovetail on what Brittany had talked about with additional classroom time and trying as a board to identify that. Because, you know, we're not in a classroom. But and I think I've expressed this before, I'm not, I'm not opposed to a four day school week. But I think this will be our ninth year. Does anybody know for sure? Is there a ninth consecutive year of having four days school week? So we may have freshmen, I could be our eighth graders, could be kindergarten, that have not had five day school weeks. And what's hard for me to overcome is the arguments that I'm not disputing, because I don't have any data to dispute it, but the argument for four day school weeks would be the same argument for a three day school. And having three days, but extending three days, because that would allow more time perhaps in four day school weeks. So I don't know how, where you draw the line. And I think of it in terms of, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Derek, but most varsity extracurricular activities practice wise are typically five days a week or four days a week. So when I hear that, you know, our varsity athletics and maybe the junior varsity and other other subgroups, or, you know, my question is, how, why is it important to spread out certain things over five days and other things not as important or maybe more important to shrink it down to four day? Because, and I don't know if it's still on the 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 school website, but the, like a top 10 list of why four day school weeks are great. And some, and I maybe it's removed by now, but this was as of last year, I remember seeing it. It's kids miss less school. Well, my hunch is more kids have missed even less school if they had three day school weeks. Another pro was kids miss less school because of doctor's appointments. Well, that would be even more true, the three day school weeks. So it's my understanding as a parent in the community who has two students at the school that over the last nine years, it's been discussed to a certain degree. And that usually use time around this time of the year, there's always some reason for being given and afforded just another extension opportunity and why not pay the fairing? And I recall requesting two or three months ago. And I could have pushed this further, so I I take some blame for this, but, you know, I wanted to avoid us being in a situation where, well, it's too late now, we don't have enough time between putting together curriculum and logistics and financing and things like that. But it is only October 5. If the district historically waits until April to make the final plan, is that right, Mr. Corrigan? I'm sorry, I don't know. That's six months that the school board would have if they desired to do so, to really, I think, provide a significant analysis of the situation compared to what I understand is taking place in previous year.
I'll go back to my earlier comments on, I don't think you realize the energy that the staff is putting out with COVID. It is all consuming. We have, I've talked to the principals regularly about how burnt out the staff is already, and it's not even MEA. And and we're doing distance learning, we're possibly looking at, we're doing hybrid. I really, really think it it'd be very difficult to do the the necessary work to do it correctly. Because you should be surveying the community, surveying staff, having work groups on what's the advantage between the four day and the five day. And 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 I have no skin in the game on the four day either. I've, I've always been in a five day, so I don't know what it's like to work in a four day. I I just think this is an all consuming, and I've said that more than once, situation with COVID. And it's also very, very time consuming to make a a major switch in your schedule. It's not just, it's a school board decision, but but you want staff involved, you want community involved. And so to be able to do the surveys properly, to analyze just just everything about a four day and the scheduling and all of that planning. I I think you're you're asking a lot to be very, in my opinion. I'll leave it at that.
I can appreciate that. But whether or not it ultimately determines a decision for 2122 at a noun, we'll start the process then for 2223. I mean, that that's my concern. Because there's issues that are going to come up that are unforeseen, that affect our school district, our staff, our administration, our entire community every year. And I know this COVID has really thrown a curve ball at the entire world, and I absolutely appreciate that in relationship to the time and effort and additional work that would be done to come to a real good conclusion based on an analysis of the situation, but I haven't heard. I I don't recall one board meeting, whether it be a regular or special board meeting, where there's been anything on the agenda with regard to a five day school week versus a four day school week. And a corresponding discussion thereof. And my hope is that some point in the very near future, we can coordinate efforts to at least keep that on the forefront so that we can have the best information available to us, best data available to us. Community input, staff input, administrative input. Minnesota Department of Education input. But it just really, really makes me uncomfortable relying solely upon student achievement and justifying a four day school week because the only thing we're comparing it to is other four day school weeks that we've had in our nine year.
Well,
I'll pick on my own family. I have no idea whether or not my student that I am the father of have achieved more with a four day school week versus the five day school week. And I just, it makes me uncomfortable communicating that to the public if we're not also realizing that we don't know what the outcome would be had those same students been afforded an opportunity for a five day school. So that's the idea behind really, really, really desiring a discussion.
I I think the the understanding that I have is that you do not have, the Pelican Rapid School Board or school district does not have an extension beyond next year, and they aren't going to grant that. So you will have to go through the formal application process where a lot of these questions will come in. And rightfully so, I I would say you can, you can start that whenever, whenever things do settle down, I don't know when that is. There's no reason why you can't start having that discussion and start filling out that application for for that following year. And that's, I've looked at part of that application, it's not, it's not an easy one, and you will have to have the data. You'll have to have community surveys, you'll have to all of the, all those. So I think through that application process, you'll, you'll find that answer is everything that I've seen with the application process.
I think for me right now would be, I think it would be approved, approved, approved the next year's extension. If we're going to go back, if we had a meeting, we want to go back. With the way the staff is being worked right now, instability, number one P. I'd feel more comfortable if we had a fun balance with reserves and enough revenue coming in where we can take that on and still keep our reserves. Then I'd definitely say I'm going to go back to five. Right now, we're I think for the staff's sake. Prove the four day in the next week. We can have a work session coming up, and maybe we need to set a target date for having a work session and stick to it, see if we get what we need by then. It would be a good, good time to have them ready by December, January, or if we can bring some of the financials, it's going to be December. You know, in the past, we've, it depends on how much months to deal with, it's surveying forms. Surveying schools we've done in the past, and staff have done through surveys in the past. So it kind of depends on how much want us to put together, and then the admin team will probably have to be presented that timeline together, and then get things done. But changing learning models, you know, COVID, you know, that changes up, but I'm too in a hurry. But we had a few months that would help.
When, what is the most recent survey that we have out there asking about four versus five? Was that a question, the only one with the learning model? I want to say that that just went out, that we just did that on our last.
Did anybody know that we did the last time we applied?
No, when we were.
The last time we surveyed, it was a specific question regarding the four versus five last year.
Oh, okay.
And then we submitted the last application. In the fall, last fall, we were writing the operation, the operation, we were trying to debate whether to put it in there, whether it's in class, maybe it's whole.
How about when we were asking about learning models before this school year, were there questions again? Or were there not?
I don't recall, maybe not recall either.
Okay, for some reason, I felt like there was one or two. So it is probably not the worst idea to survey again. I don't I want to know if it's best to just start within the district, you know, within the staff. I don't know.
So, so Mr. Ness, just to clarify, Rudy Martinez, so we're approved until the end of school year 2022, but the board has to take action to approve the flexible each calendar year?
For 2122, that is correct. So we, the board must have taken action at some time this past year for this year, the 2021 school year extension. So the board does have to take action on the extension. Otherwise, you're defaulting to the five day week. And so if you choose to take advantage of that, you'll need to do that at some upcoming board meeting here. I don't think there's any immediate rush here, but you'd have to do that at some point. And then schedule your plans. You, you can schedule your work sessions and and your board agendas to make sure that this stays at the forefront and incrementally, let's do a staff survey, let's do a community survey, let's review those surveys and and as you build. And then you'll have to decide, are you going to fill out an application? That's one decision you'll have to make. You don't need an application if you're going to a five day week, you just go to it. And and so, but if you are wanting to continue the four day week, flexible learning year into the future, you will have to complete an application and get it approved by MDE.
Time, I'm going to ask one question. This, Derek, Rudy, and Mr. Ness. You know, I think it's a great idea to survey the the district, the entire district. What what difficulties or what what sort of time would be required in order for the school district to coordinate efforts to get surveys sent out to residents of the school district by December 1? Well, how much work would be involved to get that survey out to all members of the district by December 1 or even mid November with the requested response data December 1?
To all members of the district by December one or even mid November with the requested response data December one. How much time would be involved with, with putting together a survey?
I, I think the biggest concern is what, what are you going to ask? You know, you know, how that, that will.
Great, that's a big deal.
Yeah.
Important for the board to have an opportunity to evaluate the questions. On the, on the survey. And to have some input, of course. Um, perhaps in two thousand and eighteen, the board had input on how to. How to ask the, how the questions were presented. But. You know, let's, let's assume we use the exact same questions in two thousand and eighteen. Unless I'm missing something, I mean, it seems like it, it would be. Certainly possible to get those mailed out and to have. Meaningful response, you know, there's certain people that'll respond, certain people that won't, but those that are. Interested in the issue will certainly respond. Probably within two or three weeks if that's what's. Requested on the survey, what I'm wondering is strictly from a time perspective, regardless of what the goals are that I wanted to accomplish out of it, ultimately. That would be vetted out by the school board if there's, if there's any school board members that would agree with me on this issue will be forward outside of a work session, you know, during a. A board meeting when a decision could be made, but. Would it take a whole lot of time to put together a survey if it's similar to those that we're using years past to be mailed out? To every resident in the district? So that we could get some sort of response this year? Does that, does that seem extreme or does that seem like a very good done on my own way to do it?
My concern would be that if we do throw a survey, put it together, he's the one as last time, is it the information that we're looking for? I mean, it's a big decision, I think we need to think about the questions that need to be asked. And what we want to find out and the information that's returned back to us and what that's looking at. Possibly changing our learning models in the next couple of weeks. I. I don't know if that timeline is. Something that people said to you.
My other reservation is, you know, if you're talking about what population to serve it and talk about members of the district. Do you really want to provide the only one in the district or do you want a third day parent to have two days within the district? Everyone, is my opinion. Cause everyone's affected by, in my opinion. Business owners. Um. Grandparents, aunts, uncles. All kinds of different capacities, people are impacted by a four day school week and a five day school week. But I think if we limit it just to parents. Uh, we're not, we're not reaching out to all of those individuals that were here to serve. And I think it's absolutely critical to reach out to all parties involved that have a state. And a decision.
I think that can get costly on our part, I'm just pointing devil's advocate, but I think that can be costly on our part because you get a lot of the population. That, you know, might be overy or just don't have ties to the school. And I don't, they're probably not, you're going to have to reach out to them through a mailer, I don't know how else you can reach them. Necessarily, I mean, a lot of them, I don't know that they would have Facebook or follow our webpage or things like that, but. Um, I think we have to do a mailer for them and I don't know if they would feel like they had enough involvement that they would want to. Intern the survey picture.
I, I think the more upfront work you do, the better results you'll get in this whole process and, and what I mean by that is. I think you should really thoroughly vet the questions in the survey and who you're questioning. But I think more importantly is when you get the results back, how are you rating them? What's the criteria on, on how you're going to make your decision, so I think there's a, there's a lot of upfront planning. And then the survey can go out and different things, that can probably happen more rapidly, but it's what, what are the questions? How are you going to judge the questions? How are you going to be, what's the timeline of everything, there's just a, there's a lot of planning going on here that, that I think. December one would be rushed. February one might be a, a better, better scenario, I, I'm not sure. It, uh, Mr. Corf and Mr. Martinez, Mr. Nelson and everyone involved, I guess, uh, who's, who's doing? Who's doing it all, I, I, I guess that's, that's a factor.
Who would, or who happened when those eighteen surveys went out? Who was involved? I don't know that anyone was involved with, you know, looking at who that's. Um, and then I think for that, it's going to be a question to the board. And the board. Is that there something to do with compiling the data? Is there a timing to a survey? And do you want to survey them, is there any COVID time that they acknowledge time to survey families? I don't think it matters, I think if you walk up to, and again, everything's according, everything I say is according to me, this is my opinion. But I think if you walk up to any resident in the community and you ask them, what are your thoughts on four day five day school week? They're going to have an opinion pretty easily. Some may say, I don't have a dog in that fight, it doesn't bother me. Um, I'd try to, if I was visiting with a person on the street, to. Find out a little bit more why they don't think they have a dog in this fight, maybe they, they, they don't, but. I guess anytime you're part of a. A public entity and a tax paying resident of the municipality. You always have a dog. And I think in light of the fact that. We've had a four day school week for nine years. It's given people plenty of time to reflect on. The four day school week and there's, you know, we think of our eighth graders right now, been never exposed to a five day school week. At this point, there's, there's really, there could be so many families right now with students in our district that know nothing but the four day school week. So that's why I think it's good for we reach out to each and every. Tax payer in the district in an effort to get the most meaningful response.
One thing that I have thought about. Being a business owner is. If there's any alumni who's been with the four day school week here, how do they feel once they get out into a five day school? And I'm, I'm honestly going back and forth, I. Like I said, I, I haven't liked the four day week since I've been here, now I'm kind of in the middle where I've adjusted. It's, yes, it affects me as a parent and a business owner. I know it was brought up, I think a year or two ago about four day school week is really great because the kids get work on Mondays. I am here to tell you as a business owner, it's cool because they don't want to work on Mondays. They want, they don't want to work on Saturdays because they want to have fun, they want to work on Sundays and then on Monday they want to do all their schoolwork. Um, that's an issue that I've come into play. So then I've kind of been curious as to, well. Do they realize that a lot of the jobs they're going to are not four day? And has that kind of changed their perception? Or have they found struggles for going to college classes? I've just, I've been curious how it's affected anybody from here on any alone.
I've had three kids, you know, go through the four day week.
Correct.
Of all of you. Four day college. I don't, I don't think that had a certain effect on.
I think you don't have more questions.
Certainly not they're working and I, I really don't think they're college, college students.
Yeah, I don't know, but traditional finding. Where I wanted to be, I want to stay.
Me too.
He's on our four day.
Especially in our.
And you know, just getting back to like a five day, I don't think that's like a whole five day school week. They're really pretty hard to find. If you stop and look at it, I work in Burgess, I worked in Underwood, and you look at their school calendars. They're out at two o'clock this day, they're out at noon this day, the following week they don't have school this day. I mean, they have a lot of things going where. It's like, oh, we have a five day school week, but really, there's only three of those days and you went the full day. You know, so I think a traditional five day school week is gone as well.
Now we, my school, we're on hybrid, we're basically only running today. If you do the same with our students. In our hybrid.
I don't know what schools are doing up through the hybrid.
Yeah. They're doing Wednesdays.
Even, even, Barnesville, my wife, elementary Friday, she has Zoom with her students in the morning and then. Friday afternoon is planned and working in the morning. They only have students in class four day. Right now, that's it. But I think right now, four visits, I would plus and plus. That would be an easier transition to another school.
Instead of working session day. January, February, how many more do you have to do?
Honestly, I was wanting to just stay quiet. I don't think I'm. Having to say this decision.
I'm completely open to a detailed, you know, have it in front of you, whether it's for this up next year or even after now. I'm always open to seeing details. But I don't want to make a decision without. Having a lot of concrete. Information in front of us.
Full preview surveys, do we like to do my God?
Well, I'll say, well, previous to the, I don't sculptive or can we get the meeting?
Yeah.
Question.
That's a very common, but it feels like right now the staff is school alone too. Work on something like this. What's the rules to find for projects like this and come to add maybe. At this point, numbers line up.
No, it's not, it's not one, but like Mr. Nelson, he's having a meeting right now for scheduling, seven o'clock at night. He's booked, I mean, I wouldn't want to involve, you know, as much as we want to be. It's Martinez. And board, that we tend to have to. If you want to look at something for, you know, the next year, wasn't the next year, I like a little bit of time to just record it and then. Maybe in spring start the process, but time, I mean, if you're looking to the next, the next year, we have to start. Here soon. But it'd be, Mr. Martinez, myself, it's for the listeners. He's busy too. You know, COVID may change learning models, that's the time consuming because of a lot of humans. I just imagine a lot of you.
Personally, I feel that we should set a date for January, February to start the ball rolling on. The survey, what we're looking for, how we want to do it, um, you know, I drive by the school. Saturdays, Sundays, I see your vehicle here, I see the teachers all in the parking lot, I just feel like I, I. I don't think it's a good time to like try to set a date, but I think we need to start on it, so I would. I would suggest like January, we have a work session that starts looking at what we want to do. And survey what we're looking for, how we want to do it. Um, and personally, I think that. We're not going to have time to switch to a five day school week. About the extension for the next year. That needs to be made like by April, I don't know that. With everything going on and the unknowns, but.
I'd like to have that safety net, might the next meeting to. Do that to go forward with the four day for the following school year, but. If we go through the work session process and we determine. We want to go back to a five, we can. Uh, there's no reason that it couldn't. We're going to be looking at funding shifts for the following biennium. And we don't know if they're gonna, if we're gonna lose students to. With any A D M money or they're going to be held harmless, there's definitely a thing, there's a revolution, you know, speaking of. And just that's a moving student stuff on stage. As a substantial compromise. You know, here's. You want to go on the line?
Okay, thanks for the plan, plan a timeline for the evaluation, so Mr. Corf. The administrative structure. Jerry, you still with us?
I am, yes.
Okay. Some ideas on timelines?
Well, um. It, it depends on what you're trying to accomplish here, uh, i- in the sense that. I, I, you know, I, I shared a pretty fairly long email with, to the board just regarding. Timelines as, as far as making a decision, um, so. You know, being, you know, Mr. Corf's in the room, but being very blunt, i- if you are going to hire him next year. For, to, for the permanent superintendency, uh, he's literally, you know, the M D or the state statute is you can negotiate. Any time in the last year of his contract, well, he's in the last year of his contract right now, so, so at any time. You could, uh, sign a one, two, three, most common, to be very honest, is a three year contract with Mr. Corf. To be your superintendent, he'd, he'd have, he'd have that for the next three years. Um, the, the difficulty is, is how are you going to make that decision on a short order here because. If you did not choose Mr. Corf as your next superintendent, then you want to get out. Advertising in Janey or in February where the pool of superintendent candidates are the largest, um, and, and so, um. I, I just, I'm just, I'm giving you outliner, the, the vision, I guess, if you will, um. And, and so your evaluation comes in, do you want to use the evaluation to make the determination? Of, uh, Mr. Corf? Or are you going to use his twelve years in the district and his work since April through now? For this first contract and then do the evaluation after a year, these, these, again, I'm just brainstorming, talking points. Uh, what the board needs to be considering, uh, as, as you're moving forward here. So I, I think you all know, um, and I've shared with you, I, I think Mr. Corf is the right person for the position and. Uh, he, he's working hard, has vision, has all the attributes that you're looking for, knows the district well, all of those things, so, um. I would certainly be in favor of, uh, completing. A, a, entering into negotiations for a three year contract for Mr. Corf, but I also understand that the board. You need to have criteria on how you make that decision, what, how, what are you basing that on? So is there some sort of evaluation, uh, you know, a six month evaluation, if you will? Uh, like a probation evaluation that they have at many jobs? And then make that decision or, you know, so I'll just be quiet and you can talk and ask questions, but, uh. That's, that throws a few things on the table for you to, to discuss.
I understand the timing concerns, but I'd be interested in six month. Evaluation. Um.
I, I apologize, I'm really having a hard time hearing, so.
Greg Larson here, I'd be interested in having like a six month, regardless of the timing issues because. You know, we certainly understand that Mr. Corf.
You know, we, we certainly understand that Mr. Corp. You know, still our high school principal and I, I want, I want him to be afforded an opportunity to. To identify and. And, and. Move forward, identify just as the superintendent for our district and. And. Provide his own analysis with regard to. The position and have him share that with us together with. You know, the board having an opportunity. To evaluate it, I'm not sure, I, I recall doing one. I recall doing one superintendent evaluation. Since I've been on the board. I'm assuming. A similar evaluation would be in place for. Mr. Corp at the interim during the interim phase. Would that be fair to say, or is there somebody here that has a different thought on a completely different way to evaluate an interim superintendent versus?
I don't think the process would be.
Yeah, with, with the interim. The way Christie Hates me explained typically, you might set control, but. You wouldn't have that formal process like you would when you have a contract. Because you're going to know at the end of that interim period. Higher or lower. Including themselves at that time.
But Jerry, you got anything on? With an interim like?
Well, I think an interim is, there's a couple of different types of interims in the sense that you might have an interim that has a one year contract and they know it's a one year deal and you're probably not. Doing an evaluation on that person because you know they're not coming back, this is a case where it's much different, this is. His interim superintendency is, is almost serving like that probationary period, if you will, so. So you are certainly considering hiring Mr. Corp as the, your long term superintendent, so I would do. A regular superintendent evaluation, it would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I, no, I agree with what Jerry said, I mean, but it's fair to not make the decision. You know. By the time that we would have to post it, we would be up there from Mr. Corp. He was keeping some employment elsewhere. That he wouldn't know if he had a position by the time that this position would open up as well. You know, I mean, yes, I definitely think that we should have a formality algorithm. Process, and then Mr. Corp has the. Definitely be able to maybe set people if you think like that. But honestly, I think we should probably move to the three. To support January.
I think we know what we have in Mr. Corp. I would be around, obviously, we should go through another search, but that's not something I would ever want to do again. I think we want to be. Anytime soon, I think. Assuming we could now. I think we can be permanent superintendent. That's best for the district.
I have a question, Brian, and Brian, if you don't have an answer, I appreciate that and respect that. You know, by retaining your principal, you know, you want to maintain that. Because I mean, it's, it's possible. Unless. I'm way off base here, but let's say, let's say that you or anybody in here. Goes to like that. Gets to December, it's only two months away. And, you know, you've got a principal here for many years. And let's say you came to your own decision that's, that, that, that makes you want to be coming off. I prefer acting as high school principal. And more, therefore I want to let you know because you deserve that right to be there. So if, if the board made a decision January one. How does that feel from your perspective? In order to give you the, I mean, you. On your own. Process and. Your own analyzing of your desire and, and interest in the superintendent position versus the principal position. Would that be enough time for you to? To kind of do, do your own analysis because. And maybe this wouldn't happen, because what went through my mind is if the board said, okay. You decided to hire Mr. Corp. I wouldn't want to put him. With only two and a half months down the road. Having to make a decision until he's had an opportunity to digest and process. His, his personal situation as. The interim superintendent, plus, by the way, he's still the high school principal, so there's a lot going on in his work, so. My question to you will be, if, if you don't have an answer, I'm not expecting you, but. If, if the board decided to make a decision in January. Would that, in your opinion right now, you don't know, that's fine. Or would that be enough time to do your own? Analysis of, of where? Where you, where you might be.
Yeah, I think. You know, since April ninth, I worked with, up here in the building as acting administrator. And now that we restructured that into, give us. Enough time in January, if ever you know kind of where it happens. And. But it's making the same.
You got a good point. Even, even the acting administrator, you know, Jerry, for that, for you, that you're having. Different people with their. Lots of better.
Over gold, would we? Or could Brian, if it wasn't gold, then private Denver. I know it's a short time, but we already kind of know what you've been working for. And what we're those.
Yeah, wait, no, we, we set like, you know, district goals.
Yep.
You know, I don't know if we relate them to, you know, to goals, you know. What we've been doing, to achieve those goals. I, I guess. Just in case. We're, we'll have at least one of the board member, but if it's two, I don't. Mike and I would maybe like to move some of the big rocks. Out of the way before the board. Having your contract. Work of doing your contract, you know. Rudy will be up next year too. I don't know, it rests the board then. Having that done for the board.
I'm afraid. Think about it. Not to go earlier. Right now, yeah. Do we have a wall? That's been played up or? Like the process we used to do?
Yeah, I do have.
We got it, okay.
You know, and I think the walls, you know, obviously are difficult, but. We've been working on a lot of people already, so we need to go on. What's important to you? That's what I think. You know, that's what's interesting, I mean, you know, I don't know. I want you to have a input and know what we want to work on, I mean. Right about to say that you're going to do this. I know we've done that a couple of different ways in the past, as well as the whole board, the three new work sessions, which I mean, also.
What do we want to do then? The, the part of the collection? Gold? That kind of we've done before. I seem to remember quite a few of the. What do you write? Um, I'll be at. Yeah, it's second, just remember that. Day before election day? Well, any, any else? I know Derek had given us some. They actually.
I think maybe some other people then. Questions you, but I had a couple of parents ask me. You know, and, and. One was. They said that. The decision to let fans in was. To be made at the. District. And Minnesota Department of Health. So I asked her today, I said, the last I heard, it was no spectators by the associate high school being clarified. And then he. Gave us some information here, and we'll be there this day, because I've had a couple. Academy moms that have asked about.
Stay in high school, we were not going to be yesterday until. Say a lot of the decisions. Permanent. On our website, I don't know if it's on our website.
If you would be helpful.
That'd be good.
You can direct them over there. And I'm trying to be with the state. Because I haven't heard anything about them, so.
I had one question that I think is not there. Was there baseball? Is that, you know, looking on here. On the projected calendar, it just talks about beginning March. Seventeen, eighteen, well, was that one of the prior things?
That was.
That was the, I just knew where they said those. And speed, there was going to be three weeks of volleyball, two weeks of football. And then that they're going to allow some spring season that canceled, that they're going to allow the spring season. That's four weeks, and then they had the weeks all set up. So now this, the time field is three weeks. So how, how is this? I think there's more things in practice when it would work with the mother's. Yes.
So today will.
Yep. I think it's more open to kids to come.
I just don't know what they're going to. I'm curious if it was planned in advance.
More based on. Those kids don't always know those dates that come upstairs, that's cool, but I know the coach had a meeting. Last week. Our participation numbers were started. First. I mean, it worked, you know, because, you know, the way you had. Just after the test country, you have two sports, you know. A lot of kids are not doing two, they're doing. Either soccer or test country, and then volleyball and football. Yep. It's a busy right now.
I think they're.
Yes. We've seen a lot, but we have noticed that with even electives, a lot of kids want to be in a lot of our elective classes, but not just be great. A lot of them doing stuff. Mrs. Seeballs has noticed that.
Um, have there been any talk with the group?
Yeah.
That affect me a little bit.
Yeah. That's come to our COVID team. And then now our COVID team is just saying what we're offering for state high school. What we're recommending is. What we're trying to do with younger ages and fix them up. The concern is it looks, it goes up in days and now it's, now. You're a part of the case, now you're tracing, going back to that team, you know. It's a lot more than just at elementary, it's one class. So. I don't know, we're just trying to be cautious, see what we're offering, but yeah, we also know we want to. Other kids to be active too. We're allowing here to community activities on our grounds, we're just trying to know what Mr. Nelson offering, what can you have? State High School League, what? Are they giving us advice on? I feel bad for. You know, without everyone. I want kids to be active and participate, we just. We just don't want to spread, we don't want our. Kids in the older age, they don't have anything to be, to spread and other agents and. That's why we're trying to push information to our community, because we don't want that to affect our teaching, the money, the ability and our participation activities. It's a hard balance right now.
Well, anything else? Mr. Ness, Greg Larson here, do you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can.
You gonna be at our next meeting?
I wasn't planning on it, I think I'm done. So.
Real quick shot on, I mean. I, I really appreciate the board. I appreciate you, Mr. Ness, and Mr. Corp, and Mr. Martinez, Mr. Seven is sitting over here that's coordinating the meetings. I really truly appreciate. The, the group that has worked through everything over the last six, twelve months. And. I'm not sure if all boards. And this is, again, my opinion, I'm not sure if all boards have the luxury of having members being able to express their opinions. Freely. As well as hopefully administrators are able to express their opinions freely. I just really think it's. It's. It's a, it's a really. Nice. Board administration. Relationship that will continue to grow and, and invite of. The work that you had done, Mr. Ness, if I don't see it for a while, I just wanted to. Appreciate you being there because. I know you had a lot of texts, a lot of phone calls, a lot of Zoom meetings, a lot of emails. I don't know who's got more between you and Mr. Corp. Or Rudy. Or Mr. Nelson. But I'm, I'm really. Appreciative of being. One. Part of, of the system because I think it's very accommodating for. Hopefully everybody in terms of being able to express their concerns and also express their appreciation regardless of whatever goes on, so. I wanted to mention that before you left, Mr. Ness. I also wanted to mention that to everybody else here as well, just in case I don't see Mr. Ness for a while.
Yeah, thank you very much, it's been great working with the board admin and. I'll continue to work with John and, and Brian as needed, Brian. He knows what I appreciate about Mr. Corp is he's not afraid to ask the question and, and none of the other guys either, and I think that's. The willingness to, to learn and grow, it's there and it's. It, it, you, you got a great team, I agree a hundred percent with you, thank you.
Appreciate your work, Jerry. I look at other boards and I, must be a meeting, and I hear about story of other districts. Other boards are in conversation. Anything else? I think we're adjourned. Thanks for that, Jerry.
Yep, take care.
You're welcome to do anything.